Okay, I'm gonna call to order the regular Board of Education meeting on April 8th, 2020. We are conducting this virtual board meeting by Zoom. Mrs. Booton? Is Mrs. Booton here?
Here, sorry.
Here, sorry.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here, here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here, here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here, here.
Mr. Long?
Here, here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here, here.
And Mr. Paulson, okay, I'm gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I can't see what I'm doing here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God. Okay, first, as I'm gonna make a little statement here, on March 9th, 2020, the governor issued an executive order to suspend the physical presence requirements under the Opens Meeting Act. So due to the current social distancing guidelines and the stay at home order, this Board of Education meeting is being cut by Zoom. The community can view and listen to this meeting via the link that was provided to the public on a CUSD 200 website. It should be noted to the members of the audience, there is no opportunity for live comment or interaction with the Board during the meeting. Thank you to the public for their understanding of this need for this meeting to be conducted in this format. First off, are there any modifications to the agenda from Board members? Public comments that were sent in, so a little bit of a reading here. We, again, as I mentioned, the current social distancing guidelines and the stay at home order, the Board of Education has temporarily modified the public comment procedures for board meetings. There will now be one opportunity for public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. Community members who wish to provide public comment were asked to send an email to the Board of Education at board@cusd200.org between the time the board pack was released on Friday at 6:58 PM tonight, on the day of April 8th, 2020. The public comment emails will be read during the public comment portion of the agenda, the order in which they were received. A copy of the email will also be sent to each member of the Board of Education. Public comments are valuable and important to the Board of Education. We welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are important to our community. Thank you for your understanding of this need for this temporary procedure and for your interest in providing feedback to the education. I believe we've received three emails, and I'm going to ask Dr. Schuler to read the public comment emails we received from the public, Dr. Schuler.
Okay, public comment number one was from Jay Olson, who is a resident of the school district, and he indicated, "I would like CUSD 200 to clarify the use of outdoor school facilities during the COVID-19 mitigation. Per discussion I had with one board member who spoke to Dr. Schuler, I understand that the outdoor facilities are open to the public. On Friday, April 3rd, in the late afternoon, the eight tennis courts at Wheaton-Warnville South were filled with people enjoying the tennis activity and observing the strict social distancing now required by the governor of the state of Illinois. Around 5:30 PM, a Wheaton police officer indicated that the courts were closed due to COVID-19 and that the people playing tennis left the courts. This was observed to be very cordial from all involved at the courts. Our community greatly appreciates the leadership CUSD 200 is demonstrating by managing a difficult educational challenge for our teachers and students, providing access to the outdoor facilities for exercise during a stressful situation for all reinforces the depth of community that CUSD 200 and our residents share. My suggestion is that CUSD 200 provides specific guidance to the Wheaton Police Department regarding the use of outdoor facilities, allowing the community to enjoy much-needed exercise while adhering to social distancing. Thank you for listening and consideration of this item at the April 8th Board meeting." The second public comment is from Jan Shaw, who is a Wheaton resident, and the comment says, "Just a few quick points. One, since there are so few activities currently happening, will the district be seeing any decrease in spending? And two, policy changes still need to be documented and properly approved. Where do you get the authority? In fact, is this meeting and the public comment policy change violating the Open Meetings Act? Yes, I'm aware that one of Governor Pritzker's executive orders suspended the requirement for in-person meetings. Where did he get that authority? In one of his executive summaries, we find, "The Emergency Management Agency Act gives the governor the power to suspend statutes prescribing procedures for conduct of state business or orders, rules and regulations of any state agency. Since when is a school board a state agency? It is not. Where did you get the authority to hold a virtual board meeting? Think about it, it would be possible to hold the school board meeting in a school gym and keep participants six foot apart. That, we know, would meet the letter of the law and the intent of the social distancing orders." Public comment number three is from Harold Longs, a District 200 resident. "Good evening, hope everyone is healthy. On Friday, March 13th, we received notice around noon time that schools were closing. At that time, no guidance or plan was received from the school or administration with regards to how e-learning was going to work from either a student's or parent's perspective. Fast forward to today, the e-learning is still taking place with time off for spring break and Good Friday. Since March 16th, I have received a couple of emails from only one of my student's 13 teachers at Wheaton North High School and not a single email from the principal or administrator explaining elements of the e-learning plan and/or how it is working or not working. I have learned from my students that beginning this week, they're going to receive assignments on two days, two days of reinforcement time, and nothing on the fifth day. I do not understand why this is happening and how it is benefiting my students. Again, the parents have not received a single communication from the school and/or administration. This situation is extremely frustrating and should not be happening. High school students only attended eight of the 18 weeks in the current semester. There's a strong possibility of students not returning to school this spring. Please explain how the students in our district are going to be prepared for their next year of education when classroom time ended on March 13th. Thank you."
Can I report, I believe Dr. Schuler has a few things to talk about?
Great, thanks, Mr. Paulson. So just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the Board and then share with the community. Certainly, there's a lot of information that I think we could share, but I think we have made every effort to continue to communicate with our community on a daily basis, certainly along with our staff on a daily basis. So I just want to share a couple of highlights of some of the things that we're working on. In the e-learning space, we did, per the guidance of the state of Illinois, officially transition after spring break from days that were declared act of God days to days that are declared remote learning days. We have posted for our staff new resources, some weekly professional learning and guidance, in addition to those that are being provided by the school or PLC. We have been working on a new schedule structure, just to provide some guidance, especially around the introduction of new material. That guidance also addresses our continued effort to provide social emotional learning supports, which is hugely important at this time. Again, I mentioned at the onset, we've been communicating with the community other than over spring break, on a daily basis, providing updates, both on the e-learning plan, that e-learning plan is on our website, and we'll continue to provide updates. We've continued our daily Chromebook distribution to students and support staff in need of a device to execute their work. We're still distributing even this week about 60 devices a day as students and families continue their e-learning. We're providing meal service on a daily basis. As of today, we're up to almost 1,300 meals a day that are being served, which is great news. We partnered with the Student Excellence Foundation to launch the Crisis Food and Security Fund, which is also providing support through mobile food pantries and some direct family support in terms of food security. I'm certainly not gonna say at this point that absolutely everything is perfect. We made a really quick transition from face-to-face learning that obviously we're very proud of in District 200 to an e-learning plan, really over the course of about a weekend. We've launched that effort, but I would say without a doubt that we've collectively rolled up our sleeves to make things happen. I've got to give an incredible amount of support, shout out and thanks to our senior leadership team that have all pivoted their work and really led us through this effort. Certainly Melissa in the e-learning space, Chris pivoting to a remote SEL plan that's gone in place. Rod has led the effort around technology and distribution of technology. Bill's really led the food service plan. Charlie has helped us to oversee all of our human resource work and make sure we're keeping our staff engaged, and certainly Erica has continued to lead the charge in our communication efforts. It's really been a tremendous team as we've led that work. In the long term, just a couple of things that we're starting to think about. Certainly, right now, our school closure is through April 30th, but we are taking a look at some of our key May events and developing options for some of those events. Both of our high school principals shared a video with their seniors in the last couple of days. We absolutely know this is not the senior year that they expected. It's not a senior, what a senior year should look like, but we're gonna do our very best to make sure that we provide opportunities to celebrate key events here as we move through the spring, and they, this may not look exactly the way that they would in a traditional end to a school year, but we are, we are beginning to do that planning in a way that absolutely celebrates the work that our students have done. In that learning space, we are looking at some summer support options. Certainly, our goal is to make sure that we bring all students to the starting line next year where they should be. I believe without a doubt that we can do that. I believe both through the work that our teachers have done, through their e-learning plans, and through some structured opportunities to give kids that may need its support through the summer months. Our goal is to make sure that we get kids to the starting line next year exactly where they should be. And then the other long-term implication or area that we're looking at really is the whole area of our budget. Certainly, in the immediate, we're monitoring very closely any discussion that's taking place at the county level around the property tax payment cycle. We haven't gotten any indication in DuPage yet that there will be an adjustment to that, but certainly working with Bill and the business office, we've run our cash flow scenarios to make sure that we are absolutely certain what it is that we'll need in that first distribution to move forward. I think that's the most immediate concern. Certainly, there are some areas as we navigate through the spring here where we're not spending some money that was designated in our budget this year without full school operations or in-person school operations taking place, and so we've been looking at those areas and again, understanding how we can perhaps pivot some of that resource to support some of the summer opportunities that we're talking about, as well as looking forward into next year, and then beginning to really look at how some of the potential changes in the next school year will need to be updated in our financial projections. I don't think there's any doubt that on the back end of this at the state level, there's gonna be some financial challenges that we're gonna need to wrestle with, and I find it hard to believe that that's not gonna impact ultimately some of the revenue streams that are available to schools. So we're beginning to map that out, and again, we know that's a reality. So in the immediate, we're certainly continuing to work on kind of our new normal as well as plan for next school year and have an eye on some of those long-term budget challenges. That's it.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schuler. Are there any questions from board members about Dr. Schuler's comments? If you have any questions, go ahead and raise your hand. I see Chris Crabtree.
Um, I just had a question in terms of kindergarten. Okay, I have a question in terms of kindergarten roundups. Did those happen in, I know they're typically March dates, just so that we can kind of have, you know, some accurate projections or at least getting the word out to new families. I know my subdivision in one has a lot of homes up for sale right now, and you know, just do we have a plan to, you know, get information out there?
We need to hear you here in the chair, because you have kindergarten roundup. All right, let's go to Jackson.
Yeah, real quick, you mentioned the term "distribution of devices." What does that, what does that mean? Do we feel that all the students now have some kind of device for e-learning? Did you hear my question?
Go ahead, Jim, one more time.
Okay, yeah, you mentioned the word "distribution of devices," and I guess my question would be, you know, do we feel that this, pretty much every student has some kind of device where they can participate in the e-learning process?
Yeah, great question. I believe that we're very close. We have been working on some procedures to really track student engagement, and that's really the way that we've gone about that. We do have some students that have not engaged yet in their learning experiences. I don't know that in all cases that's because they don't have a device. I think in some cases, there's, there's some thought that we may have some students that have already actually moved out of the district as all of this started, so we're working on that. But I do believe, based on our engagement numbers, that we are very close to saturation point on that.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to... I'm gonna go back to Chris Crabtree. Re-ask your question, Chris.
Re-ask it again? Was, with March being a big kindergarten roundup month, were we able to get our kindergarten roundups, and what is our plan if not to engage with that community, with that community?
Chris, do you want to give an update on that?
Yeah, so I believe we got all but one of our kindergarten roundups in, actually. We got most of them in February, early March. The only one we did not get in was Hawthorne. I think hers was planned maybe the day before the closure, but she had a really good grip on her numbers. We actually still ran our all-day kindergarten registration, and numbers came in pretty strong, actually, really high number of sections that we're projecting right now in that area. And in that same breadth, we know that there are some people who are not able to access that electronically, and we're working on a contingency plan depending on when we're able to get back together, because some of those folks are gonna need support in person. But we've also devised, working with our technology department, an opportunity for people to register via electronically as well. So while, while we still obviously are not having people come in to register, we have a pretty, pretty good grip on our numbers because we ran those roundups, and really our front offices get on those pretty closely. So as we went through all of our staff meetings, I feel like we have a pretty good grasp on them, but what I would say is, we're gonna see those numbers increase a little bit as people start trickling in and some of those other variables that you referred to.
All right, thank you for those questions, board members. So we have our consent forms that are... Number one is approval of ABM Industries Group LLC's Social Learning Services contract renewal. Number two is approval of the adopted FER 3B pre-proved content that is tied to the FER 3 requirement. Number three, approval of biz 21 ability improvements, roof work or bills. Number four is approval of bids 2020, fiscal minutes, fair replacement Monroe School. Number five is approval of bids for 2020 facility improvement, house and theater lighting at Wheaton North and Monroe School. Reject approval of the house and theater lighting at Wheaton North and Monroe School from 2020. Now, six is approval of application for the scheduled 2020 survey work. Seven is the approval of spending contract renewal. Number eight is approval of those surplus assets. Number nine is approval of a contract met with Illinois contract. Number 10 is approval of bill payable on payroll. The last is approval of Mitch from March 2020, meeting open, closed, March 11 to 20, open and closed, to destroy recordings close prior to November 20 as a lawful law. And number 12 is the personal review including employment, designation card, and leave apps, minimum certified pass, and new state. Are there any board members that remove, and if so, go ahead and raise your hand on the Zoom panel. Okay, after a little information to share from the staff?
No additional information.
Okay, now I'm gonna go around the table, so ask individual board members if they have any questions. Mr. Crabtree, do you have any questions, items on the agenda? Okay, Mr. Hanlon, do you have any questions? All right, Robert? Some members in the room want to hear you here.
Uh, yes, I have one.
Yes, I have one.
For, for payments to places like where kids are, where students are outplaced, or to TCD, those kinds of things, how will that be, or has been, how has that been affected or will be affected over the next couple of months? Well, I assume they're doing some type of e-learning as well. Did those payments stay the same for us in the coming months here?
Yes, for the most part, those tuition payments will remain under the assumption that kids are being provided remote service.
Okay, I want to go back to Mr. Hanlon. I see your hand raised.
Yeah, so that issue was mine. I had my device muted, so that was not a Zoom issue. My question is related to Bill's payable that I reviewed throughout the week, and I had a question that I asked Dr. Schuler, and I just wanted to hear, have everyone hear it, about fees for conferences and payments we've made already, and if those conferences aren't being held, or those competitions aren't being held, that we're working to recoup those costs.
Yes, I think the question obviously about there, the comment was about any activity that we've already paid for that's now not happening. Bill and his team from the business office are working with schools to recoup those payments. In some cases, if it's an activity, they, they may apply the fee that's already been collected to next year's opportunity, and in some cases, we're receiving a refund from, from those. So we've got a handle on the list of those and are working through recouping or getting a credit for any of those fees.
Okay, Mrs. Erickson, did you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, but, Mr. Long?
Just one question. Are all of the projects now bided, completed?
Go ahead, Dave.
Did you say for me to go again? Yeah, sorry, Brad, for whatever reason, I'm kinda garbled. My question was, are all the projects now bid? I know we had a couple that very old from last month.
So Dr. Schuler just went in the other room.
I thought I saw.
Yes, this completes all of the bidding for...
And do you happen to know the total?
For all costs associated with the bidding and engineering architect fees, we're just under 7.2 million, which is our budget.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then I see that this has an additional question. Go ahead, Jim.
I'm not sure if you were talking to me or not, but...
Yes, Jim Madison, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, you're really garbled.
You're really garbled.
Yeah, I can hear everybody else, but yeah. So I don't know if you're getting feedback. Maybe that does it, I don't know, but you know, when you were talking, it was very difficult to hear you. But anyway, that, that's basically what I wanted to say, so.
Taking a little adjustment. Taking a little adjustment here. Okay, is there any other items on the agenda? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
So, second.
Okay, move by Mrs. Boone. By Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
It was Dave Long.
Oh, okay. Davey, vote.
Yes.
Okay, Miss.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
And I vote yes, also, because it's presented. We have prescriptions here on the gentleman versus a resolution arising. Authorizing non-reemployment, full-time, first-time, second, third-year, non-tenured staff. Any information from Dr. Eric here?
Yes, just a couple of quick comments on this item. So this is an annual step that we take to, these, these are first, second, or third-year teachers who are either on a single-year contract and we don't have a position for next year. We're perhaps filling a leave position and/or a couple could be for non-reemployment pieces. So this is the time of year where we have to take actually all, all three of the steps that we're getting ready to take. So for the first one, I would recommend that the board approve the adoption of resolution authorizing non-reemployment.
Okay, Mrs. Catrice, do you have your hand raised with a question?
Yeah, so can you please explain, so say they had a one-year contract and then we hired them back next year to fill another one? And then we hired them back the following year for another one. Do they ever get any accumulation toward tenure or is it they start from scratch every time?
Yes, if they work consecutive years, that does accrue toward tenure.
Okay, any other questions for board members on this agenda item or action item? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time, first, second, and third-year, non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code under section 24-11 as presented?
So moved.
So Mrs. Crabtree? Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. I'll call the board's vote, Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin? Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
And the votes are supposed to be Act 91, to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment for time, for second and third-year, non-certified staff. Okay, action item number two is similar. This is a resolution authorizing non-reemployment, part-time, non-tenured certified staff. Sorry, from Doc to share.
Yeah, so for the resolution for non-reemployment of part-time staff, we do this annually because most of these positions will likely be needed next year in some capacity. But until we know exactly what the part-time need is, we, we take this step. And then as the staffing plan is finalized, those part-time positions get finalized. So I would anticipate most of these positions will be back next year in some capacity similar to what they are this year.
Okay, if there's any questions or comments from board members, go ahead and raise your hand on the panel. Okay, it looks like there's no additional questions. So can I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code, section 24-11 as presented?
So moved.
That was Mrs. Boone?
Second.
That Mr. Long?
Hamlin.
Mr. Hamlin, I have a voice, this is my right. Okay, roll here, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Miss Long?
Yes.
Then I will use as well. So item number two, this is approved, presented. And the third item, I thought similar adoption of resolution for reduction of force, missile termination classified staff. Is there any further Dr. Schuler share?
Yeah, there are a couple of positions on this resolution for the reduction of force classified staff. These positions were actually introduced this year as a part of a solution to our struggle to fill actually some of our teacher assistant positions. We kind of made some, uh, some quick adjustments to try to bring in some support. But I think with, with an agreement with our collective bargaining group that we would do this release at the end of the year as we sought to find a long-term solution for those two positions.
Okay, are there any questions from board members? Okay. I have any motion and a second to adopt resolution authorizing reduction in force of educational support personnel effective June 3rd, 2020, or the last workday during 2019, 2020 school term, whichever is later, as presented?
So moved.
See, that was Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Okay, it's, it's second, Mrs. Erickson? Okay, I'll roll. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erick?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Miss Boone?
Yes.
And Miss Hamlin?
Yes.
And then I will, this as well, so Act 93 has passed as done. So we move to our report. We have three reports that have posted for, for, for me only, the leave and answer. The construction update for our early learn center and then board communication log. The request to come as a member and be those groups. So go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any question. We have a one compliment is the upcoming media poll scaled. See, the whole media is good for 8/27, 2020. And we are currently looking for possibility of reschedule. Regular meet 13, 2020. I'm sorry, 8/2020, so I'll get those first time. With that, there are no further action comes forward in open. And I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. To Matheson, second.
That was, I think that was Mrs. Boone who moved second by Mr. Matheson. Hold on, favors, go ahead and sign. All right, anybody opposed? Okay, the meaning is different. Thank you, everybody.